Yeah, I'll do it.
I'm gonna call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Chief Snyder, I'll turn things over to you.
Good evening, council. It's my pleasure this evening to have two individuals receive their promotional experience here with you. And first one on the docket is now lieutenant Brett Daniel. He's joined this evening with his family and wife, children, parents, and in-laws. So come up. Can you change the look? Purple.
Good evening. I'm going to this side from behind.
No problem.
And we are going to be on this side with the podium, you don't mind, Mr. Daniel. If you just raise your right hand under your head. I, Brett Daniel.
I, Brett Daniel.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Do you have family?
Thank you.
Your relatives?
Yep.
That would like to be a junior firefighter?
Sorry, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys want to get some?
We use these tables.
Yeah, no, we don't have much to do.
No.
Good things.
Doing this.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Make sure as we have them again.
All right. And if you thought that was a large family, wait till you see the next one. David, if you'd like to come up. Next on the agenda is new, gonna be newly appointed engineer David Estes and his family, which is too large to name.
That's a good thing.
Have everyone? Please raise your right hand under your head. I, David Estes.
I, David Estes.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of engineer.
Having duly appointed to the rank of engineer.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
To solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will solemnly swear to support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of engineer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of engineer.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do you have one? This one, and do you also who are children in your family?
I do.
Would like to be junior firefighter? Maybe four of them? I can't tell how young anyone is. Thank you.
Could we get one to volunteer to be a fleet junior police officer? Okay, wanna get pictures with, uh, get a group shot, y'all pile in there and face this direction, I'll get you up there and shoot. What's your eye? There's under there. I know.
There's, there's outlets under there. All for a laptop?
There's an open one there on that side.
Hello, there.
There's one over here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations. No, no, no.
Yes, and I'll read it.
I guess you're conditioning.
Okay, we're just taking care of a technical issue.
I can go ahead.
But we'll be moving to presentation shortly.
We'll make that work.
Oh.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, nobody wants to come in here anymore.
Is KJ here?
Could KJ enter the council chambers, please? With our awardees?
She's next door in the overflow, I saw.
She said that both recipients were going to be here.
I think, I think, I think she called just got her.
Here she comes, thank you.
Come on in. All right.
Okay. So the city's neighborhood partnership committee comprised of multiple department heads and staff accepts nominations throughout the year for improved and maintained properties throughout the city. A residential and commercial property are selected during each month, April through October. And so this evening, we have first, the neighborhood of the month award for a residential property is being presented to Cynthia Ross, 3211 Seventh Street.
Thank you so much, thank you everybody. Congratulations.
Good to see you, how are you doing? Yeah, there you go.
I'll spread the word. Second ward.
Second ward.
Next we have neighbor of the month award for commercial property being presented to Guy Fauch of North Brady Imports Plus, right next door to City Hall, 630 Fifteenth Street.
Is this the second ward two?
Thank you.
The second ward two?
I don't remember what she said, what she said.
This second ward or? Right here, right over here, 630.
Or this?
Yeah, is City Hall in second ward or third?
No, depending on, on that, of system. So this is third.
The 630 Fifteenth Street, 15th Street, 630.
Right, right at those, yeah, it's on the east side.
And our community development program manager KJ Whitley explained that each winner receives not only a certificate that the mayor presented, but also a traveling sign that's placed on the property for that month, so you might see that. Thank you, KJ.
Next up is special events presentation, Macy McManus, please.
There we go. Evening, try to keep this short and sweet for you. With the potential reopening on June 11th, we thought this would be a great opportunity to come and share a little bit about the special events committee and what we currently have in the queue for this upcoming summer. At the end of our presentation, we are going to ask consideration for return for budget allocation that special events has had in the past. And with me for my presentation is city clerk Janine Holland Beck Par to speak on the council role and policies, as well as finance manager Keith Verbeck to share a little bit about the budget side of special events. So as you can see, it is a multi-departmental committee. These members partake in monthly meetings and they consider special event applications based on their position and expertise. Our meetings also include representatives from Metrolink and Visit Quad Cities. We work closely with Metrolink to ensure that our road closures will not interfere with the transportation systems. And Visit Quad Cities actually brings events to Moline. For example, the upcoming NAFSA tournaments, so that is the North American Fast Pitch Association tournaments. And according to Visit Quad Cities, it's estimated to bring in about $50,000 in local taxes. In addition to that, they are also a great partner just for helping advertise other events that we have in Moline. So as I mentioned, the main role of our committee is to review the special event applications. These are sent to us through our website and they come directly to me. And when reviewing these applications, our first priority is of course to ensure public health, safety, and welfare of our residents. And in case you were to have a question, does something need to go through the special events committee? Anything, or the special event is considered the use of streets, parking lots, or other city-owned properties. There is an exception for Bass Street Landing and Parks Department. Those are two separate applications that are also on our website. They go directly to Main Street or they go directly to the Parks Department. They do have representatives on our committee, so that communication is always open. And then Keith will go into more detail on the budget side of things, but we also provide financial support to our events, and that's based on event growth, long-term plans, and tourism revenue for Moline. Quad City Marathon, for example, is estimated to bring in 6,000 people to the Quad Cities, so that's a huge event. We want to support it and we definitely want to keep it here in Moline.
On the previous, yeah, it, it just said approve the use enclosure. Are you guys, that still comes back to council to approve the closures or?
If it's a, and Janine will go through that.
If it's a highway.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Uh, this slide, the slide we're gonna see next is, um, what we funded in the last past three years. And of course, as you probably have seen, these are basically our signature events that kind of put Moline on the map. Uh, of course, the TBK QC Marathon, everyone knows it's based in Moline and it's a big draw in the area. Mercado on Fifth is a wonderful event that we fund each year. Um, the other one, Race for the Cure, sadly, that one did go away, but that was a wonderful event that brought in almost, you know, five to 10,000 people on those runs. Uh, one thing I do want to point out, in 2018, that very bottom line, because it seems like a strange little event for us to be funding, that was passed through money. So we got money from a third party and it just passed through our tourism fund. All this funding, all this money comes out of the tourism fund and, um, and each year, our original budget was 50,000 and as you can see, we never spent 50, but it's always nice to have that available in case some new event, some exciting event that comes through. We want to have funds available in case, we don't just spend it all. We, you know, we go through the committee and if it's deemed necessary, we'll put funding towards it. And of course, 2020, when COVID hit, everything just kind of shut down. Questions?
This is our lineup right now for the 2021 events, so we have our planned ones, these are applications I've received so far. And then ones that we do anticipate, I did just receive the Homecoming Parade application today, so that's planned to be October 8. And I believe council usually has a little float in that, so that's something to think about. All of the planned events are planned to be in person this year. And as you can tell, a majority of them have pushed to late summer or early fall in hopes that we are fully open. We do try to stagger the events to avoid too much traffic interruption or police coverage, fire coverage, et cetera. Unfortunately, a lot of these events did take a big hit last year, they either were virtual or they just didn't happen at all. But this year's been really fun, we've brought in a few of the event coordinators to come and present at the committee and they're very enthusiastic about getting back at it and being in person, so us as a committee, we want to make sure that we're doing what we can to help make them be successful, especially this year in particular. And then before I hand over to Janine, I also wanted to mention, since these plaques up here on the wall were just hung yesterday, two of our events, the Mercado and Marathon, received the hometown awards this year. And they were very appreciative of the collaboration and support that they received from the special events committee, so I think that that says a lot.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the role of the city council and, um, the current special event policy is available online if you ever want to take a look at it and review it. One of the biggest pieces of that is breaking all of the events that come to us into two tiers. And that is dependent on the impact that they have, um, whether there is alcohol, um, the number of people, and whether there is a full road closure. So if we do see those things, they are bumped up to tier two. If it's a new tier two event, it will come to you for approval. So for instance, um, Mercado draws a large crowd, they do serve alcohol, they do have road closure. Um, and so if that was a brand-new event, that would be coming to you for approval. Um, once you do approve it one year, then unless there are some major changes to that event, it won't come back to you again. Um, the other type of event that will come to you is those that require highway closure, you'll see those every year, and that's a requirement of IDOT. For them to permit the closure of a highway, they need a resolution from, um, our city council saying that you've approved that first. Any questions on the council's role as far as special events go? Yeah?
So, so for roads, I just want to make sure that I, that I understand, so if, if it's brand-new, then we vote on it, unless it's an ongoing one that has, has the highway. So that's why with the Mercado, we did vote on it once upon a time, but.
Right.
But I think they're also talking about maybe now extending to like 12th, so at that point, then we vote on that again? Because it's expanded to another street?
We could bring that back to you, we didn't think it was enough, and partly that was because of COVID where they were wanting to be able to distance people, and so we felt like moving that out of block, we weren't gonna bring it back. But if you'd like to see things like that, if you think that's a major change to the event, you could definitely bring that back to you.
Uh, personally, I, I think that probably if we're expanding to another street and those sorts of things, because actually, Alvaro and I had, was contacted by somebody who had some concerns.
Oh, okay.
A business owner or whatever about that expansion, so I think that that might be a, a good thing if we're doing expansions as well. I mean, I'm just one of.
And the committee did talk about that and had asked the, the executive director, the new executive director for that, for Mercado is Anna Maria Roca, um, previously Vera, so some of you may know her. And I think it was our construction manager that specifically asked her to go to all the businesses and get their approval. I think it was gonna be like a petition-type form that they would sign, but we had quite a conversation with her about that to make sure that they were all okay with that. So that's kind of in the works, but we will definitely bring that back to you.
Yeah, I mean, just from our conversation, I think they're okay with, it's just how early it was. If it's from five o'clock on, they were okay, it means they're closed, but I think losing a couple of hours of business hours was.
And I, I did email Marty on it, just because, uh, I guess somebody was already trying to get signatures and it, but it just happened like a couple hours.
Yeah.
So it's just that new, so, but I figured staff will get a chance.
So I have a quick question on this, clo- closing the communications loop, basically. So when you have a staff committee like that, do we have a mechanism for you to, to just give us a little update on the top issues you're seeing through, you know, in the last six months or the last year, or things that you need us to weigh in on like that? Or don't you need us to weigh in on that? You know what I'm saying, like just, is there a mechanism, maybe that's something for our roles and responsibilities talk that we could just check on?
We can, and, um, I can provide an update, um, even monthly during the, the peak time for special events, just to let you know what's coming and if there are any changes.
Well, let's have a talk, like, about what kind of mechanisms we have for that, you know? And then we'll double-check what kind of mechanisms we have for all of our committees giving reports. Does that make sense to everybody? What I'm talking about? Just how to get updates as needed, yes?
Yeah, and, and to that point, if there's something, because this, what originally happened with the Mercado was the special events committee at the time denied them. And, and we never heard about anything. And then, it was only after then, some people contacted a couple of us aldermen that we, that, but we would have had no idea. And so to, to close that loop, I, I'd like to hear if things get denied or, or whatever, because it may be something where it's a council priority, but for whatever reason, that committee didn't think it was worthwhile or something.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely do that. And there was one more thing before we go back to Keith that I wanted to mention, and that is, um, if you look at the special event page on our website, it breaks those applications into three different ones, and so there's the special event application, there's parks, and then there's also Bass Street Landing, so we treat those three different, um, with three different applications because they're managed by three different departments or staff members. And so I think that was the only thing that I was gonna share is that we have that, oh, and then that Macy actually just created a new table on that website to, um, really kind of increase transparency to the public, where they can go in and they can see the, um, events that are approved for 2021. And then they can also, um, she's got hyperlinks to the map, to the liquor license, to the certificate of insurance. So if the police want to go in there and take a look at that, you know, they can pull it up in their phone. If someone wants to maybe, um, race, but they're not sure what the route is, they can pull it up and see. So I think that's a really nice plus that, um, she's just added for us.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, as we talked about before, now we're talking 2021 year. And, uh, the past three years, we've had a budget set aside for 50,000. And of course, COVID kind of threw everything into, so last year with COVID, um, we are cutting, you know, budget left and right and we dropped that down to 32, not knowing when the state would ever reopen. Um, and of course, and it ended up pretty much closed the whole year. So now 2021, we here, we might have a opening in June. And, um, of course, the events will want to come back as strong as possible. You know, everyone's gonna be that one to want to get these, uh, because everyone's itching to be back on the streets doing their 5K races and concerts and all that good stuff. Uh, but of course, in the meantime, they gotta deal with all the COVID restrictions, which just puts on added more cost to the event. And so for this year, I don't know if you realize, the budget was pretty much the same budget as last year's budget, COVID budget. Um, so that's why this year we're starting with 32,000. And we anticipated going into 2021, we have the TBK, uh, QC Marathon, we got a 10-year agreement to provide funding to that organization as long as they base the race out of Moline, start and stop. And that's a wonderful event, creates a lot of hits and bits. And then the Motown used to be the Microbrew Mile. It's, um, the same person sponsoring it, they, uh, the leftover funds go to, um, fund the Children's Therapy Center. Um, so that's a good event, and we anticipated that they would be back. But unfortunately, they had to now kick their race to August, and we're hoping in August they'll still be able to put that race on. And it's also a, uh, Craft Brew Fest as part of the event. So as you can see in the middle, uh, column, you know, our budget's 32, we have so far received 42,000 in requests, so we got a dilemma, that's why we're kind of here tonight. We, the committee has already committed 27,000 for 2021. So as a committee, we need to know are, are we stopping at 32, because that might hamper some, maybe, you know, who knows, comes around the, uh, around the bend, you know, the fall, they might have some exciting people come in with some great ideas to get going. And it'd be nice to have some money set in the side for us, instead of saying, oh, sorry, the funding's gone for the year. Let me go to the next, I don't know, any questions on this?
The, the criteria for deciding who we're giving money to, I, I know that we're committed with the, uh, with the marathon because of, of other things, but I, I, we had had some kind of criteria that basically we would fund things either that were new or expanding. Not just that we would get into the realm of.
Yes.
They would just rely on us, and so with, with these, were, were those things new, all new or expanding?
Yes.
Do you want to cover that?
Sorry, sure, that's okay. They are all new and expanding, um, Mercado was the one that most recently came to us with a $10,000 request, which it put us in the position where we didn't have 10,000 to give, but they are expanding, they're gonna see that growth, they're gonna, um, create something that'll be kind of a year-round, so they're working on that building. Motown is something, uh, they're trying to expand their event, um, Quad City Marathon, that was that MOU from last year. But we've also asked them to consider a Friday night festival, and so this year, that wasn't really possible with COVID, but we're looking in 2022, with the city partnering with them on that.
Yeah, because that was part of that.
Main Street? Right, so we're really seeing some growth. NAFSA, something new that, um, the, uh, Visit Quad Cities group, or was that, no, that was a Parks broad. So that was a Parks event, but, um, Parks doesn't fund, that would come from tourism dollars. So that's something we're looking at, and what, um, Macy typically does is we have discussion on these, and then. And what Macy typically does is we have discussion on these, and then she sends out a survey to all the committee members, and everybody says what they think, but about the level that we should commit at. But we are looking at whether they're new, whether they have the potential for growth, whether they're looking to expand, what are they doing to do that? And then we also look at the economic impact to the city. So obviously Quad City Marathon, we wanted to keep the starting, the finish line here because that creates that impact. Nafa, great economic impact, as Macy said. And then Beer Stewby, that classic car show, is something they just started last year. This is the first time they asked us for any funding. That has the potential, as Visit Quad Cities said, to really bring in a larger event. So we want to kind of encourage the growth of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And that's why I thought I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on something.
Yeah.
Okay, on the last slide, then, basically just a summary of what we've been discussing. We're currently at 32,000. We would like to restore the budget pre-COVID. We think a lot of exciting things will happen by the end of the year as Illinois opens up. So staff is recommending to restore our funding back to $50,000.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Is that going to come from contingency? Is that, is that the idea that 18,000 comes from? Or is this, and I'm not sure, I mean, my assumption is the stuff we didn't spend last year
stays in the fund. Currently, there's a fund balance of a little over $408,000 in that fund.
In the tourism fund? So it's going to come out of tourism? Okay. I'll make a motion that we increase it by 18,000 on the tourism.
Second.
Seconded by
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight eyes, no names.
Motion passes.
We got one other, if, if other things come up, don't be shy to come if there's other big events or anything coming or expansions, let us know.
Okay.
Coming out of the gate this year, we can do.
Especially this year, there might be more opportunity to poke something too.
Did you really just say that? All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to our first agenda item, which is the TBK Quad Cities Marathon Highway Closure.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to apply for a highway permit and execute the documents in conjunction with the Quad Cities Marathon and Road Race. Staff seeks approval of a temporary road closure for the TBK Quad Series Marathon. This is required by the Illinois Department of Transportation. In order to close it, it requires a resolution from the city council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Macias. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number two, Motown Mile Highway Closure.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to apply for state highway permit for, from the Illinois Department of Transportation and to execute the necessary forms in conjunction with the microbrew mile and 6K road race sponsored by the Children's Therapy Center of the Quad Cities. And that's for Saturday, June 15th.
Move to approve.
2021. And staff seeks approval of a temporary road closure for the Motown Mile Road Race. And that is again, a requirement of the Illinois Department of Transportation. The race will run from Fourth Avenue and, well, be run on Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue, part of state highway Illinois 92. Staff recommends approval.
Motion by Alderman Went.
Second.
Second by Alderman Macias. Any discussion? Alderman Schmidt.
Just to clarify, we're approving it as written. I think we misspoke from the dates.
The date in here is wrong, I believe.
Yes, yes.
And so I corrected it.
I didn't want to accuse anything of being wrong, but yes.
Yes, so I corrected it as I spoke it. It says June 20, 2019.
It should be August 14, 2021, right?
Yeah. When is, when is the race, Macy, do you know?
It's August 14, 2021. That has been
June 14th, okay.
It's accurate here.
I'm looking at an old version here, so. So as presented, June 14th, 2021.
That's the motion. Sorry, no, it's August 14th.
It's August 14th, 2021.
Are we approving it as written?
Yes, that's the same thing as
How it adds correct.
Yes, as written in the council report. Got it. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. The third item is video surveillance system.
This is a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept the sole source into Connects quote, and additional electrical subcontract quotes to purchase all equipment necessary for the completion of phase one of the citywide surveillance camera system for a total project cost of approximately $214,147. Staff seeks approval from the city council to procure this system at 16 camera locations downtown, along with installing cameras on our new mobile police trailer, which we'll be receiving here in the next month, and with the intention of a phased approach to citywide video surveillance system in key public places. Currently, the Quad Cities Airport and Tax Layer Center uses this system, and there's some opportunities to integrate to create a unified video platform. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alderman Went. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Mr. Timian? Then Mr. Waldron, then Mr. O'Brien.
We might have the same question. My understanding is that this is not a budgeted item for the year, so I'm curious to know where the funds are coming from.
It would come out of contingency with, then at a later time when we bring budget amendments to the council, we will amend our budget.
Thank you.
Alderman Waldron.
My question was the same. It just seems a little premature to be dipping into contingency already. This didn't sneak up on anybody, I assume, and it could have been budgeted. And we have our goal setting, priority setting tomorrow, and I just think this would be a good thing to see if there is the, the will to do phase one, to do phase two, to do phase three, and make it a long-term project and get it budgeted. But at this point, I'm not thrilled or inclined to dip into the contingency this early in the year.
Alderman O'Brien.
Is this something that's been discussed, I mean, with the downtown, all these businesses that are going to have cameras on their patrons all the time when they come out? To me, it's, I know I'm living in a fantasy to think we're not living in a surveillance state, but it just seems like we're going to have cameras. I mean, I looked at this, and I, I didn't have time to look at the presentation you sent that was given to the last council, but it seems like, well, big brother here. I mean, I know that we have, I mean, I know they're for security, but has there been an uptick in crime down here? Do we have, are we having problems with security like in downtown? Because if there is, maybe we need to look at hiring some more police for downtown if that's the issue. But what is, I mean, were the business owners consulted on this? Anybody know?
We'll let Mr. Van Nuys answer.
May I ask Chief Galt to come up and respond to that? He could probably do it a little better than I can.
Yeah, I actually employed our Main Street Coordinator, Jeff Manis, in this project. We've been working on this for about two years. I started this in 2000, late 2019. We put it on hold, obviously because of the COVID pandemic and pulled back, we knew that the funds wouldn't be available. The downtown businesses were mostly receptive. We have had some problems in the downtown area, and I won't really get into a lot of the details there, but, you know, we do, we oftentimes have to stick squad cars down in the area to record certain incidents or issues that we've had. And we found that that video has proven to be very helpful in a variety of areas, especially for the liquor commissioner, for some significant issues. We already have a video surveillance system that we procured last year from just a big box retailer and put it in the U-Lot, which is north of the Beer Stew, because we had significant violent crime issues in the early morning hours that the bars were letting out in, in the, in the north U-Lot there. And that proved to be beneficial for particularly the liquor commissioner and some discipline issues, and then some crime. We had some Cadillac, or Cadillac converter thefts just recently down at U-Lot as well that was beneficial. And I think, you know, one of the issues is, I think somebody mentioned, you know, why now? And so we really can't go forward with any other phases without phase one. Phase one contains a $60,000 part to get us started, which is the server, the licensing, and then we can build out from there on all the other phases. And when I presented that in March, we had broken it up into five phases, and we'll figure that out as broadband expands. We can't do anything without phase one, including put cameras on the mobile trailer that is scheduled to arrive, was supposed to come this week, got a little bit delay for a part, supposed to be here next week. So there's some things that we really can't move forward with, without that. And then finally, I would just say, you know, I certainly support it with the goal setting and understand that, but I'm pretty confident that this will complement all of those areas, such as economic development, public art, revitalization of the I-74 corridor, because those are the things that give me anxiety, as you guys talk about making the city better, is that how am I going to protect those refined public safety infrastructure for that? So for example, public art, those are really hard to protect 24/7, but we can add maybe technology to enhance public safety for those pieces of investment. So it's a long-winded answer, but I'm known for being long-winded, as Marty said, but yes, we have consulted some of the downtown businesses.
I do have a quick question before you, Alderman Moyer, if you don't mind. I hear your point about timing. However, it is May, and it's almost the end of May, so we're almost halfway through a year. Is this, in your experience, to those that have been serving for a while, really an early point in the year?
No, not necessarily for something, an emergency or something that comes up that was on plan. I'm just saying, the chief even just admitted he's been talking about this for two years. And I realize it was a COVID budget, but there's always an opportunity to get this in the budget. We're about to start budgeting again here in the next two months. I'm just reluctant to dip into the contingency.
Alderman Moyer.
I was just going to say, I support it. I don't see it as a big brother thing because we're not watching to just watch. We've had, we've had a couple incidences in the downtown where, and, and, you know, we have a difficult time maintaining our police numbers, right? Our employment numbers. This is an opportunity where you have one of these events downtown where someone's moving. You don't have to have police on foot or cars, you know, converging on a, on an incident. You can actually use the video then to, you know, reduce the number of police officers that you have. You can, you pick somebody up where they're coming to. Jeff Manis and I were down for an event, and I think there were two or three squad cars trying to pin this person down. They spent a couple of hours just trying to find a person. This is something that would, I think, just take, would increase the safety of people downtown, as well as relieve the police force, I think, of at least some of the manpower issues.
If I could, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would agree with you, and I think the other thing that we have to be cognizant of the state of Illinois and the House Bill 3653 and the, and the trends in law enforcement is to, you know, especially on some of the smaller crimes, act at a later time. And so is there video evidence that could, or technology that could allow us to use law enforcement resources in a different way to attack violent crime and then maybe deal with some of the property crimes in a retroactive or responsive way at a later time, that we don't necessarily have to have a confrontation at three in the morning with an intoxicated subject over a graffiti offense, but still have the evidence to prosecute that at a later time. So I think this is something that could enhance public safety, enhance our operations. And you are correct, we don't have the ability to be, to overwhelm areas with law enforcement at a constant time, and that's not really something that the public has an appetite for at this time in 2021.
Yeah, can I say one other thing before you go? You pointed out the liquor commissioner. That would be me, right? And I would say from my perspective, I certainly would want to be trained on what I'm seeing, you know, but I would think that that is a helpful tool for someone that sits in that role. So that's how I see it at this point in time. Yes?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things. I mean, we had the issue with Cor Harrell a couple of years ago, where he made it to the parking lot at City Hall. He had been shot and died, fortunately. And I'm certain that if we would have had these cameras up, that we would have had video of what that car was that was chasing him and would have helped him in those situations. And, and to your point about the liquor commissioner and those sorts of things, it's often just a couple of bad apples that cause issues and look at, you know, Rock Island and, you know, if they feel that they can get away with it and everything, then it perpetuates and grows. And I think things like this help to, to keep that family atmosphere, to say, hey, if I'm going to go out and do some hell raising, I'm not doing it in Moline because I'm going to get, I'm going to get caught doing it. And so I'm in favor of this. I think we definitely have to have some policies and procedures to make sure that it is done correctly and not abused. And I know that there's a lot of state statutes and those sorts of things, but that is something before we implement that I'd like to see, you know, kind of like, hey, here's our procedures, this is what we can and can't use it for, and this is how it, how it works. I think that would be something for us. But I'm going to support it and just would like to see that before we flip the switch.
And that would be the advantage of multiple phases?
Right.
You know, we're not rushing into something. Just a reminder, two times on the topic. So Mr. Schmidt, and then Mr. O'Brien, that'll be your second time.
You know, I had a lot of, well, the same concerns that you had, but I think, you know, I spent some time discussing the issue with Chief Galt, as well as a little bit with Margaret, with Marty, and, you know, we are already in a place where we're having to commit some of that work. Chief Galt talked about using cars, we use, you know, using other video methods. So we're not unfamiliar with how to protect people's privacy through that, and building up our procedures and making sure it's in place will be important. But I think there's also just an argument that this is an investment in making sure that we're not misspending our resources. And some of the description, you know, having to park a squad to get video, which now means our squad is exposed as well. And having to, you know, acquire a camera from Best Buy and put it up in a way that may or may not be easy to get down or to get the information out of. I think there's, there's a lot to be said for making that a little easier, you know, as long as we stay within those protections and those procedures, which are very much in line with how the department has laid that out in discussions, I think, so.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
I guess that's my next question. Who, who gets to see this information that gets fun? I mean, where does it go? Does it just stay with the Moline Police Department? Or will it get shared, it'll obviously only get used in a court, right?
Yeah, correct. So the video server, it would be housed in the Moline Police Department, it would be owned by the city, it would be ours. We would not share it with outside entities. It would be for official use only. We would have a procedure inside the police department that if there was an incident, like a detective would request the video through the chain of command, the Vigilon software, and the company that manages the software has a built-in audit feature through there that you have to have a login and a timestamp, all of the use or the access. Very similar to our Axon body cameras as well, also has a login, a secure login, and a timestamp. The video would only be retained for about 30 days. It may start out a little bit longer because of the smaller number of cameras we have. I think I'll work with the IT department to make sure that the policy would match the rest of the city camera retention policy. I believe David told me that was a 30-day retention policy for examining the cameras that are in City Hall and outside the city and some of the other locations. We'd have the same retention, and then it would be overwritten, and that's a pretty, a best practice in video retention practices. So, yeah, we're, this isn't something that we're going to, you know, license and sell or outside entities. This is for law enforcement use only.
Okay. Did I get an answer on the business owners down there?
Yes, he said that most of them had said they were fine with it.
Yeah, we did do a door-to-door survey, but Jeff Manis met with several of them, Bent River, the Mercado, several other businesses down there, and generally supported. And of course, many of them have video surveillance, and in some instances, we're asking them for copies of their video surveillance. And again, just to reassure everybody, if you weren't familiar with the presentation, these are public space cameras only. They are north and, north and south streets, east and west avenues, and then festival spaces like Bass Street Landing and Mercado. These are, there's, these are looking at the roadways and the sidewalks, and not into businesses, not into residences. They are specific to public space only.
Thank you. Mr. Macias.
Yeah, and I'm all for, you know, providing an added tool for public safety and maybe solving some cases, whatnot. The one thing that did stick out for me, there was a section The one thing that did stick out for me, there was a section in regards to facial recognition technology. I know we talked about that, it's not something we would use, but there is the capability of having artificial intelligence facial recognition. I just want to point out that all you have to do is Google search and a lot of times those have biases where when it comes to darker faces, in particular, black females and black males, but black females more than any other segment tend to get bad hits, just based on the data that goes into this. So just want to ensure that we don't, somehow we protect against even using that feature at some point or if it's ever used that we don't get into certain issues of having the computer identify people in the wrong circumstances.
Yeah, just to be clear, the, this software does not have facial recognition, artificial intelligence built in. We have no plans to implement facial recognition. It does not tie to any big database, such as like a driver's license database or anything like that. There is an analytics tool that it helps us search, for example, silver car, is kind of some, just simple icons, click the car, click the color, it might find that, click the, you know, appearance search like black jacket, you know, black coat or something, red coat, green coat, and it will pull those all up, but it is not searching on facial recognition, which, you know, is kind of a standardized term for the measurements between eyes and nose and cheekbones and things like that, that is stored in a database that identifies a person by a name or other biometric data. That is not something that we're interested in. This is just standard video surveillance with a, with an analytics tool to narrow down the field of appearance.
Okay, thank you. Is this your second question?
Just a point of information.
Okay.
What about the license plate reader? Yeah, there's no license plate readers incorporated in this. They do, Vigilant does have license plate reader technology, but it's not part of this software.
It would be an upgrade.
Yeah, it's, I would definitely have to come back to you for that. It was about $800,000. We passed on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to interrupt, but that's not fun.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we need to move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to call that motion? So it's.
So we've got nays.
Six ayes, two nays.
Right. O'Brien and Waldron, thank you.
That motion passes. Number four, parking prohibited, 10th Avenue.
Can I get to that page, Mayor? Thank you. This is an ordinance demanding Chapter 20, the Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code and Code of Ordinances, parking prohibited at any time on 10th Avenue on the north side between 40th Street and 41st Street. We're seeking approval from the City Council to adopt a parking, no parking any time on 10th Avenue on the north side between 40th Street and 41st Street. The width of the road here is approximately 32 feet. When vehicles are parked on the north and south side of the road, it's very difficult for vehicles to safely pass through this section while traffic is turning on to and off 41st Street. We have notified the neighbors, in fact, it's the neighbors who requested this, and it's been through the Traffic Management Committee and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Meyer, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number five, 2021 lead water service replacements.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the Maryland City Clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Fisher Excavating, Inc. for projects 1354, 2021, 2021 lead, lead water service replacements in the amount of $144,124. Under the budget, we had budgeted $100,000 for lead service line replacement and the contract came in higher than that, at $144,000, but we do have funding available in the water reserves line item, which is where the water system operates out of. This contract will replace 32 lead service lines and eliminate two service stubs on 29th Street between 9th and 12th Avenue. These service lines will be replaced between the water main and the property line. Services located beyond that property line are the private, are on private property and are either copper or galvanized piping. The advantage of this is that we'll be able to replace some, some of these lead service lines, which we anticipate IEPA and EPA to come up with some stricter guidelines here moving forward. And the other advantage is that 29th Street is scheduled for asphalt resurfacing in 2022, so we'll replace those lines this year and pave over some of the construction next year. So staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Mr. Went. Alderman Went, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Timian.
It's my understanding that the ARP funds can pay for this. Is there a way to apply these retroactively in any like lead? So we were able to do that?
We can replenish our funds probably using those ARP funds at a later time, man.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number six, cross connections BSI agreement.
This is a resolution authorizing the Maryland City Clerk to execute and attest to a one-year contract with Backflow Solutions, Inc. for administration of the Water Division's Cross Connection Control Program for the amount of $6,000. The plumbing code requires water supply piping within homes and businesses to have specially-designed flow valves, which are backflow valves. Those are installed when the building's plumbing is connected to potentially hazardous substances. Public water systems are required to maintain records and enforce testing for these valves. And water systems are also required to survey customers triannually to determine whether their plumbing systems contain these hazards. The company BSI is also serving Rock Island and East Moline, and what they'll do is charge a certified plumber $9.95 per test. And also we'll end up paying about a dollar per survey in that triennial. We have 17,000 connections, is that correct, Tony? And so staff recommends approval of this contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Alderman Schmidt.
So am I reading this correctly, that this is something that has typically been completed by staff?
In the past, it's been done by staff, but this frees up staff and allows third-party to do it. We have a similar situation in fire with Bryzer Systems, which does a very similar type of inspection for hoods and fire suppression systems throughout the city. And so it's the contractor that pays the fee. Of course, they'd probably pass it on to their, to the customer, but.
Sure. So is, is this a matter then of we are understaffed in passing it off or this is better completed by an outside source?
I think it's better completed by an outside source. Tony could attest to that if you want to say something.
Alderman, good evening. What's motivating this change is the back, the backflow management software that we're currently using is being required to have an upgrade that's somewhat costly at this point. And as we evaluated options and have come out of some reorganization as the result of COVID, we feel like the staff hours that are being invested in this function right now are better spent on other duties. There is no intent to eliminate any staff as a result of this.
So, but is, is the cost of, is the cost to citizens? Is that, that's about $170,000, is that right? Is it $17,000 a year at $10 apiece?
The cost as the result of this contract would be, to the water system, would be about $6,000 per year.
And what are the residents paying? How many inspections is it a year?
The residents, there are about 1,500, 1,500 of these devices in homes and mostly businesses of Moline. And those folks, the folks that actually have these devices are being subsidized by the rest of the system. This contract would put the cost of the management of this process on those customers that actually have the hazardous connections.
But most of those hazardous connections are there for fire suppression systems or types of things that might be required by the city for them to have? Is that true or? Is it only like commercial?
In every case, these valves are required by the plumbing code, not necessarily by the city, it's the state plumbing code.
It can be as simple as your sprinkler system in your yard.
Yep.
It maintains the integrity of the water system we don't want.
No, I understand the pump piece in that it's keeping that stuff out, yes, yes.
Alderman Went.
Yeah, I guess two things, just to put a finer note on what you said was, I think this is a good idea because it is shifting the cost to those actual, it's more of a user fee than it is for some, you know, single mom out there who's just paying extra water fees so that, you know, some commercial building can have their fire suppression. The fire suppression commercial should pay the 10 bucks to do it. The second is, talking about the surveys, is there any indication on what our return, I mean, I've got some rental properties, so I get these in bulk from time to time. What is the return rate that we're currently having and do they have any indication on what their return rate is? I mean, my only concern is, I mean, if they're paying, if they're charging us per survey and it obviously costs us to do it, are they do, do we expect them to do a better job of return than what we've been doing?
Yes, the, we currently see between 25 and 27% responses and they expect, they expect us to see about 40%.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number seven, Safe Routes to School Sidewalk Project.
This is a resolution authorizing Maryland City Clerk to execute and attest to local public agency agreement for federal participation to commit safe routes to school funds for motorfield tax, Section Number 19-00273-00-SW, 48th Street and 48th Street Place, from Wilson Middle School to YMCA, and authorizing a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for motorfield tax funds to be dedicated to this in the amount of $85,000. We've secured a $200,000 grant from Safe Roots to School in 2019 to construct a wider sidewalk on 48th Street between Wilson Middle School and YMCA. The project is expected to cost about $285,000. The federal commitment will not exceed $200,000, so a minimum of $85,000 must be appropriated to cover the city's share of the cost and is budgeted for in 2020 month motorfield tax funds.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Any discussion? Mr. Went.
Yeah, just for clarification, it's, there's a big span there that there's no sidewalk now, so it's not just enlarging the existing one, it's actually putting something in where kids were walking in the grass, so I think this can be a good addition in that area.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number eight, Strategy of Consulting LLC Letter of Engagement Cancellation.
This is a resolution authorizing the cancellation of a letter of engagement with Strategy of Consulting LLC for legislative lobbying services for the city of Moline. Mayor Potty proposes that council reevaluate its future lobbying communication needs and the continuing need to engage the services for Strategy of Consulting is no longer needed.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Macias. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Went.
I just, tomorrow night, we're going to be doing goal setting and strategy and stuff and I just hope that this is one of the topics we talk about on our lobbying regarding Western and change of flag or whatever as a decision as a council on how we want to move forward. I'm going to support this because the legislative session's ending here and I think this is a good time to reevaluate, so.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, that motion passes. Do we have an other this evening? Other items?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Yes, we do.
If I may. The. Apologize, let me just get myself. We have the opportunity to apply for several, a couple grants through the U.S. Department of Justice. One is a Office School Violence Prevention Program and the other one, did you grab that? Sorry. Is the 2021 COPS Hiring Program. I'm going to let Chief Galt explain the two. The reason we're coming to you on this with others is that there's a deadline for applying for these grants and if we waited an extra week by placing it on the agenda, we'd probably lose some valuable time in the application. So Chief Galt.
Thank you, Marty. Counsel, the first grant I'd like to bring to your attention is the 2021 COPS Office School Violence Prevention Program. The funding opportunity for this grant is due June 15th. Up to $500,000 is available for individual award. I'm asking for your permission to move forward under our grant policy to apply for this grant. Today I had a conversation with Dr. Matt Bain at, Bain, I'm sorry, at the Moline School District, who's Assistant Superintendent and also in charge of security, as well as Craig Reed, their Director of IT. And they're very interested in expanding their camera program to include what I just presented to you a little while ago. And what I had put on that program was an expansion in Phase Four to add cameras at basically the crosswalks and the, you know, the safe routes that get into the schools themselves, not necessarily on their property. The schools district has a much different camera system than, in its district wide. We're looking to enhance their technology and then also provide public safety at our roadways leading up to the schools. So that potentially would be about $103,000 that potentially could come off of, of my request for you in Phase Four. However, there's a 25% match requirement under the grant. We talked about some other things that, that we're still going to explore that goes along with this grant authorization, which would be also some additional notification systems between law enforcement and, and the school district, as well as some training opportunities. So I'm asking for your permission to apply for the COPS School Violence Prevention Program.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Went.
Was there any discussion about also Wharton and Brownie Field as a, an additional site?
Yeah, so actually, to be fair, it also includes Western Illinois University, Augustana's Fields down behind Target. So we have multiple locations, but largely they're, because we have so many schools, there's nine, nine or 10 schools right in the city of Moline, so.
So it.
Yes, yes.
Anyone else? Okay. That's another question. No, we have a question.
Sorry, I was formulating it in my head. So with the, the matching funds for that grant, do you have a proposal for where that money would be coming from?
I think by that, by that time that we can budget for that. We can put that into the future budget.
Okay, what's your second item?
The second one is the, it's also a COPS. Oh, yeah.
We're doing them separately? The motion was on the COPS one.
Yep, on the button.
Yes, okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Second grant that's available through the COPS Hiring Pro, or the COPS Office is the 2021 COPS Hiring Program. The deadline for this grant is also June 15th. CHP Awards will provide up to 75% of the entry level salary and fringe benefits for each approved position for a three-year period with a 25% local cash match. However, the entity must retain those, that, how many other positions you applied for for up to 12 months following the three-year funding. So you get three years at 75%, but you also have to agree to keep that, that spot on for one more year. So roughly, today, in today's dollars, it's $119,396 for an entry level salary plus benefits. So that'll be a local cash match each year of $29,849. Over three years, your investment is $89,547. And then the following year, an additional $119,396. That's, that's basic police officer salary benefit, single coverage of insurance could be a little. Now, that's, that's basic police officer salary benefits, single coverage of insurance could be a little higher, up to a maximum of $125,000. So if a person took family coverage, we might exceed that, we might be stuck at the 125. But so over four years, the total investment would be $208,943 to add a police officer. Uh, the, the, uh, point of, that I'm bringing this to you is to enhance our gun unit. Uh, the, uh, the, the COPS grant is particularly interested in addressing violent crime, uh, in firearms. And over the last few years, uh, violent crime has, has increased and even in the city of Moline, shots fired has increased 71% from 2020 to over 2019. As you know, I started a gun unit in 2020 and they seized 122 guns in the city of Moline. We've already seized 36 guns in 2021. Uh, I think that's an important part of my job is to get those guns off the street before they become a part of the violent crime cycle or injuring the next individual in our community. So the plan would be if we are able to get this position through grant funding, we would add that. We already have a very good opportunity to engage with the ATF, uh, and to increase our partnership with the ATF, adding a body to the gun unit and specifically working with the ATF on, um, um, you know, how guns are being diverted from law for commerce and attacking, uh, those illegal transactions or illegal possession of firearms in our community.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Mr. Went.
So, one of the concerns has always been with, with this program is the, the creep of the number of sworn officers because you can't do it through attrition and.
Yep.
So, so help me understand, you know, four years out, can we have attrition for other positions? I, I, we just don't want a situation, and this is where a lot of police departments, when this first came out in the Putin administration, took advantage of it, blew up the, the, the number of officers they had and then wound up with a lot of long-term liability with pensions and those sorts of things and it kind of, you save money on the front end, but it was a long-term cost. You know, price versus cost that we always talk about. How does that interact? Or how do you intend to have that interact, what, what it'll look like five years from now?
Well, I think the number one job that I have as, as a police chief is to constantly evaluate the programs that the work that we're involved in are offering for the public needs in our community. And so just in the two years that I've been here, we've changed, uh, the structure of the organization. We've reorganized people, we've diverted, uh, people to different, uh, uh, you know, tasks and missions. And I think that that would need to be an analysis at that time, that, that year is, do we need to eliminate, go back to 81 officers? Uh, do we need more officers? I'm hopeful that you, under your leadership and the economic development, we may need more officers because your, the city is, is expanding. We have development and, you know, 500 more residents downtown and 10, you know, two, three, four thousand. Maybe we divert that to the traffic department. Maybe we, you know, move that officer somewhere else or maybe we eliminate by attrition.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Chief, can I clarify, I'm sorry, can I clarify, um, was the due date June 15th on both?
It is the same date, correct.
Okay, and then you said $5,000 individual grant on the first, what was the amount of the second?
Sorry, that's, uh, $500,000 is the limit for the first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, my current project is 103 for that school one.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh, the limit for this COPS hiring grant is maximum federal share per officer is $125,000. I'm just looking to go after one additional position.
Okay, thanks.
Correct.
Alderman Schmidt.
The same question, but I presume you would also be budgeting for this in the future, is that?
Yes.
Are you paying for our commitment to it?
Yes, yes, we would, uh, obviously in that fourth year, so if we started next year, three, five, 26, we would need to put that into the budget for 2026. If I did math right there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Of course, just to clarify, this is all contingent on, uh, obtaining the grant, we wouldn't do it without the grant.
Yes. Hearing none, that motion passes. There is no public comment this evening, so we will adjourn this committee of the whole and move to our regular council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. There is no invocation.
Thank you. Remember, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of May 11, 2021.
Roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
And again, I request approval of, um, Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of May 11, 2021 and appointments made during this evening's Committee of the Whole Second Reading Ordinances. Council Bill 311-2021, an ordinance amending Council Bill 3026-2020, which most recently amended Moline Ordinance Number 88-3-2, establishing an enterprise zone in the county of Rock Island, Illinois pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of East Moline, Illinois, Moline, Illinois, Silvis, Illinois, Rock Island County, Illinois, and the Village of Mylan, Illinois, by revising Section 3 Exhibits A and B to include new territory within the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone. Resolutions. Council Bill 1112-2021, a resolution authorizing the creation, the position of Human Resources Director, waiving the requirements of Section 24-2201A concerning advertisement of the position and directing the city administrator to bring forward a candidate for appointment to that position together with any required adjustments to the compensation and classification plan. Council Bill 1113-2021, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute and attest to an extension of employee leasing agreement with GovTemp's USA LLC for its leasing of an assigned employee to fill the position of interim city administrator for the city of Moline through December 31st, 2021. Council Bill 1114-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application to and enter into an agreement and execute unnecessary assurance and certifications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, entitlement funding, under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended of certain projects and programs for fiscal year 2021, and approving projects and program recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Policy for the use of 2021 CDBG funds and the 2021 Annual Action Plan, which contains said projects and programs, and authorizing the mayor to implement those approved projects and programs upon the approval of the City of Moline 2021 Annual Action Plan by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to exercise any and all powers required to obtain such funding and to implement those approved projects. Council Bill 1115-2021, a resolution authorizing Corporation Council to execute a contract with Miller Trucking and Excavating for the termination of water and sewer utilities and the demolition of city-owned property located at 2306-2308 and 2312 Fifth Avenue, Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $49,500. Council Bill 1116-2021, a resolution authorizing the Fleet and Facilities Manager to purchase a new fluid delivery system for the amount of $73,023.27 from Seneca Companies in Des Moines, Iowa. Council Bill 1117-2021, a resolution authorizing the Fleet and Facilities Manager to purchase two Falcon hot boxes from Logan Contractor Supply, Bettendorf, Iowa, for the amount of $37,292. Council Bill 1118-2021, a resolution authorizing the Fleet and Facilities Manager to purchase four 2022 Ford F-450 four-by-four pickup trucks from Sexton Ford, Moline, Illinois, for the amount of $163,145. Council Bill 119, I'm sorry, 1119-2021, a resolution authorizing the Fleet and Facilities Managers to purchase a plow and crane utility body replacement from Canig Body and Equipment Incorporated, Peoria, Illinois, for the amount of $58,813. Council Bill 1120-2021, a resolution declaring a city-owned vehicle, a 2010 Ford Fusion Hybrid, vehicle identification number 3FADPOL31AR314816 as surplus property. Council Bill 1121-2021, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Emery Construction Group Incorporated for project number 1347, 2021 alley reconstruction for the amount of $176,073.30. Council Bill 1122-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section number 19-00271-00-BT, 19th Street between River Drive and Avenue of the Cities, for the amount of $381,563.50. Council Bill 1123-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section number 14-00267-00-BT, along the Mississippi River between 17th Street and the new I-74 Mississippi River Bridge, for the amount of $130,0751. Council Bill 1124-2021, a resolution appointing each Alderman to serve as the Mayor Pro Tem on a rotating monthly basis during the mayor's term of office. Council Bill 1125-2021, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute and attest to an agreement between the City of Moline and the Board of Education of Moline School District Number 40, setting forth the terms for assignment of four police liaison officers to Moline Schools for the 2021-2022 school year.
Move to approve the consent.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Timian. Roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
All right, the consent agenda passes. We move to the non-consent agenda.
Resolution. Council Bill 1126-2021, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute and attest to a local public agency agreement for federal participation to commit safe routes to school funds for motor fuel tax, section number 19-00273-00-SW at 48th Street and 48th Street Place from Woodrow Wilson Middle School to the YMCA, and authorizing the approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section number 19-00273-00-SW, 48th Street and 48th Street Place from Wilson Middle School to the YMCA for the amount of $85,000.
Move to approve Resolution 1126-2021. Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
We move to First Reading Ordinances.
Right. First Reading Ordinances, Council Bill 312-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles in Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10, parking prohibited at any time by including 48th Street on the east side from the northeast corner of 12th Avenue, north for a distance of 60 feet. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. We will move to miscellaneous business. We start here with Alderman Williams.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Macias?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Alderman Went?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, uh, thank, um, Jeff Manus and, uh, the movement downtown with the Parklets, uh, that, you know, it's out now in front of, uh, Lago Marcino's and we're working, I, I kind of put Jeff in touch with another place where we may be able to get some additional grants for some additional ones down there. But in talking with, with Jeff and a couple of other, um, uh, business owners, restaurants, coffee shop, uh, one of the things that, um, uh, is of concern is, a few years ago, we put together a sidewalk cafe policy and at the time, the approach was extremely conservative, whether it was, it was to avoid any liability at all costs or, or whatever. We now have gone through COVID, we've, we've expanded things and, and it's worked really, really well. So what I'd like to do is, uh, direct staff, uh, to come back, you know, within the next month with an updated, um, sidewalk cafe policy, uh, that, uh, really reflects actually what we're doing and what we know will work, uh, because I think that having that stability and knowing what our policies are, not just during an emergency situation, will encourage those restaurants to buy a couple extra tables. So that was, you know, Tom from Dead Poets was talking about, he's like, I, I'm not really sure how long and how far out in the, uh, the area I can go, but I certainly could go three levels out because people want to sit outside more. So I, I think that that would be something really good. So I'd like to move to direct staff, uh, to do, uh, to come back within four weeks with, uh, updated.
Some motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Waldron. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Move to approve.
Okay, um, Mr. Timian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, I just wanted to quickly recognize Christina Conklin and her partner in this, uh, Missy Birdsaw. Christina Conklin is a librarian at the, uh, Children's Services Director at the Moline Public Library and recently competed in, um, uh, in something called The Pitch and they got a $40,000 grant to improve literacy, uh, in our city. So I just wanted to, uh, make sure everyone was aware of that and stop by and congratulate her.
Yes, when we, when you had the, uh, library board meeting, there was lovely congratulations to them at that meeting. It was great. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Waldron?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, for those of you there, or, I, hopefully you got a chance to see the email today from, uh, Mr. Bonnigs and Rod Schick on the Rock Island County Waste Management Agency, issues that they're having with their budget. Turns out in the, uh, last 14, 15 months, tipping fees going into landfill have been greatly reduced. Uh, people are buying more from home, they're recycling more, that it's not going in the waste stream. That's where this agency makes its funding and, uh, they are at the tipping point of being unbalanced. So they are looking at making some service cuts. The services that they provide are the household hazardous waste disposal, tires, white goods, and drop-off recycling. They also do something called the SWAG grants. A lot of you are probably familiar with that, it's a solid waste assistance grant. Back when RUCMA, that's the acronym for the agency, back when RUCMA had a higher reserves, they thought rather to return some of that money to the communities in grants and Moline, as an example, used it to, uh, support, keep Moline beautiful, neighborhood cleanups, stuff of that nature. Other municipalities used it to support their sanitation services. Now, when the agency sent those grants out, they specifically said shy away from that because someday these grants may go away. So to applaud Moline, Moline did it correctly and never put it into their operation stream. That said, uh, RUCMA is now at a tipping point on its budget and needs to make some decisions and the only decisions they have left is what services to cut. They've taken a look at household hazardous waste, you certainly don't want that back in the ravines or in the neighborhoods. Tires, you certainly don't want tires or white goods thrown in ravines and all that. So those three are kind of off the table in, in light of what the agency thinks. So that leaves the two other items, SWAG grants and the drop-off recycling. Drop-off recycling is what we have down at Public Works. We also have one in Mylan, Rock Island, and East Moline. So there are four and they're utilized by the entire county. So all the rural areas can do drop-off anywhere you want in those four sites. So what the committee is taking a look at is potentially reducing the SWAG grants. For us, it's, we get about $32,000 a year in a SWAG grant back to us. Reduce that, which would have an effect on us for these neighborhood cleanups for keep Moline beautiful, that would affect us, we either have to find other revenue internally or not do those things anymore, or drop, drop-off recycling. Now, my personal opinion, being on this agency for, since I was employed, been on it many, many years, is that the drop-off recycling, even though we have curbside recycling, is important to our residents and is important to outside agencies, even commercial and business utilize that for their boxes and stuff. So I'm more inclined to eliminate or reduce the SWAG grant that comes back to Moline. Uh, what will happen is there are 13 municipalities in this agency and they each have a vote and the vote is based upon their population. So we have 43,000 of the votes. Rock Island has 38, East Moline 20-something thousand and so on for all these 13 communities. So what, we, we have a good amount of voting prowess there, so to speak. But what I'm looking for is input from you tonight, and the meeting is on June 15th, so if you're. and the vote is based upon their population. So we have forty-three thousand of the votes. Rock Island has thirty-eight, East Moline twenty-something thousand, and so on, for all these thirteen communities. So what, we have a good amount of voting prowess there, so to speak. But what I'm looking for is input from you tonight, and the meeting is on June fifteenth, so if you're formulating a response, you have, I don't mean it tonight, but before we adopt that budget for RECCOMA, I need some input from you all on what you think versus drop-off recycling or doing away with the SWAG grant. Like I said already, I'm inclined personally to do the SWAG grant, talked to the mayor, she was inclined to do the SWAG grant. So I'm just looking for input from the rest of you on what your feelings are and what could be reduced. I just, just can't get my arms around getting rid of that drop-off recycling. That said, there is a committee of staff personnel, Rod Schick is our representative on that, and other representatives of staff from the other cities, their recommendation is to drop the drop-off recycling. I'm not surprised. When I was the Public Works Director, I absolutely despised it. It is messy, you have to determine when it's going to be pulled, people abuse it, they, I've seen everything from a car engine to mysterious fifty-five gallon drums that just show up down there. It is a nightmare to maintain. So I am not surprised the staff wants to do a drop-off, get away with drop-off recycling. That said, I appreciate their input, but this is a decision that we need to make as a whole for services for the citizens, and I certainly would like your input before I do the vote on June fifteenth.
I'll qualify why I'm aligned with you on this one. I think there are a few places in what we provide for our citizens that they really feel us providing something, and that is in this kind of service, this recycling opportunity. And it's so handy here in Moline. We are very lucky that one of these places is located here. And so, you know, I don't want to see that go away if we can help it. And so that's why I would support your line of thinking.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
As a citizen, the only time I've used the drop-off is because the recycling pickup is every other week. It is an alternative to increasing the frequency to home pickup.
The home pickup is a service provided by Moline, it's not a service provided by RECCOMA. We certainly could do that, but that would be at our cost, Moline alone. That would always be a service enhancement we could do.
Just for clarification, you can get a second, or second.
Okay.
So, that's what I get, and.
I can say there are a lot of people that we've, I've encountered in a lot of different ways, from agencies that use it, that are helping settle people in our community, to individuals that really count on that being there. So that's, that's just a perspective I have to bring to it. Yes, sir, Mr. O'Brien.
I would just hate to see us in any way infringe on the neighborhood cleanups, the handful that we do with the neighborhood groups, it's a rallying point, and they, it's become a big thing, especially with the Stevens Park group. It is a, it's an important thing to have, and I'd hate to see us back out of that in any way.
We could probably potentially be creative about how we can keep those going on our own, because those are infrequent, in my perspective, those are less frequent than the actual usage of this all throughout the year. Yes, sir.
If I had a vote, I kind of combined the two. I would say that those communities that have recycling, you keep it there, but those communities that don't, you reduce their SWAG, because we're bearing the additional cost of the cleanup and staff time and all of those.
And that is a scenario that they're going to put on the list, lower the SWAG and give that money to the four communities that are taking care of drop-off recycling for everyone. As an example, I don't know if Rod is on tonight or not, but our apron, our concrete apron that those roll-offs is shot, and we're going to have to spend about forty thousand dollars for new concrete underneath those containers down there. So there is some cost, and we're going to use the SWAG grant for that. So there are some costs.
And that's why I think that's probably the fair way to look at it.
So if you have further ideas as you, as you mold this over in your mind, you have until June what to tell you?
June fifteenth is the meeting.
June fifteenth, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
You have anything?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. I have a couple of things. If you notice, I think there was something left at your places called the twenty-twenty-one Board and Commission Appointment Vision Statement. This is something I put together so you would understand how I am looking at making your board and commission appointments. I want this, the boards and commissions to be as representative of our community as possible and laud for an infusion of new ideas and energy while preserving organizational knowledge and expertise. Increased engagement in this manner will positively impact the future directions of these groups and enhance the way our community does its business. So you'll see in the next section, the methodology or how I want to accomplish this, I can do this through a variety of avenues, from community connections I personally have, or you have recommendations from recurrent board members, which is something happening already, recommendations from city council members, I'm open to your ideas of who could serve where, and community applications, and that's something new I want to point you to. We have on our city website, under Boards and Commissions, a new link that is called the Mayor's Talent Pool, right?
Right.
So you can check that out, and that is a link to a form that any community member can fill out, name, address, et cetera, and then I do want them to upload, load a short resume with their educational history, professional experience, volunteer experience, and it's very important to me that I know how many months per year they are in residency here in Moline. I think that is extremely important for real engagement in these important committees that help us do the work of the city. So I hope you will join me in spreading the word that that is out there on the web. I'll be pushing that on social media, hopefully we can get that out through staff as well on our own city page. I do have a few resumes already, just from conversation, and I do plan to bring to you some names for boards in the next meeting. But certainly, I have split the tasks into those boards that really need work and are filling vacancies, et cetera, right now, like May-June, and then those that will come steadily June-July. So it'll be a little bit of a process, but I wanted you to know the process I was going through, so you could talk to people in the community, and we'd all be on the same page with how to get involved, because we know it's, it's a huge task to ask people to get involved, but we really need them to step up, so. Any questions? Yes?
Yeah, so that residency question actually kind of begs a question that Sam and I had been talking about for a while. Did that ever go anywhere? There was some concerns that some of our committees and things, there's some inconsistency on what the criteria is to serve on it. Some of them said that you had to be a Moline resident, some of them didn't say anything at all, you know, and I know, I think Sam may have been working at some point on, but I'm not sure if that ever went anywhere.
There's a little inconsistency because some commissions and boards are in our code and some are not, right? So we'll be embarking on a process of reviewing, that Janine and I had a nice, long meeting about how to really get to the bottom of what these should look like and how they're governed and all of that, but there is in code the requirement that anyone serving on boards and commissions may only be absent for the same reasons all of us can be absent from meetings, and that is only family emergencies, a health emergency, or a work requirement. That's it. So that's why the residency piece matters, so, we'll be following through.
But I think some of the concern was there may be people that then move to Rock Island.
Oh, right, there's someone stepping down because they're moving to Rock Island, so, but we need to figure out what, how to be consistent about.
But I think the concern was some people were moving to Rock Island, saying.
Oh, yeah.
And so that was the concern of, is that what we want? But then the other side of the coin is, you know, they may not live here, but they own a business in town, and so, so I just want us to be diligent, but I think it does need to be reviewed, because I think there is.
There's a variety of.
From one commission to another, it's, can be.
Yep, so we'll, that's a task for the summer.
And I can say that I have checked that, and I'll take another look and make sure, but the only time that they aren't Moline residents is, like you said, if they own a Moline business and they're part of an SSA or Main Street Commission, but, yeah, we'll pay close attention to that.
Yeah, I don't know, Sam, I think you had something.
I'll touch base with you, Mr. Moore. Does that work?
Yeah, we had talked about this some time ago, and, yeah, not a whole lot's happened since then.
Yeah.
All right. The second item is, could you please check your calendars for June second and third, your availability, like we have had to check for the strategic planning session, those are the dates Margaret Christopoulos and I are looking at for our roles and responsibility training. Just send me an email, I'm not sending out a due-to-poll this time. It's very efficient, but I'm not going to do that. And, and don't tell me right now, but tell me tomorrow, when I see you at strategic planning.
How long is that going to be?
Margaret, can you advise?
Two hours, okay.
Okay. And then, just the last word, I'm looking forward to tomorrow night, so, thank you so much. All right. Any other, no one else has miscellaneous business?
No.
Alderman Williams has something.
And no more public comments, so we are moving to executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C eleven, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS one-twenty C, one-twenty slash two C one.